Tess.
There you go.
You got that?
Yeah, alright.
Just one question. And if you didn't get it the first time, I call B. Dora in beautiful King William County. Ms. Lawrence, would you like to do it? Oh, and also, I have a request from Mr. Greenwood. He was on vacation. He will be calling in. We'll hit him on the phone before we do a vote. Go ahead and call. Well, last time we got him on the phone because, as you know, it was different.
What?
I didn't hear it.
Okay, sure.
And while we're waiting on them, they're gonna call. Mr. Hanson. Y'all still hear me back there on mic?
It'd be nice if you speak a little louder.
Uh, Mr. Hanson, for medical reasons had to leave and will not be returning.
But I think he's gonna get right up on it.
Yeah, that's what it appeared to be. Alright, Mr. Greenwood, I have a motion from Mr. Greenwood to allow him to participate telephonically from beautiful Hawaii, I should say. I'll make that one.
I'll second the message, Mr. Chairman. We've gotta let it run by this place. We've been using these mics a lot, folks. We've had a lot of meetings with the Planning Commission, and we've been recording, so these mics have been getting their fair share of use. So apologies for the technical difficulties, but the battery is struggling to keep up with all the use here.
And Stephen, I think I apologize for waking you up early this morning. I forgot about our difference in time. She's, if you didn't hear, she's replacing batteries in the microphone.
Yeah, I heard you have a planning mission. I think that...
Lieutenant, you hear anything?
No.
Tess, Tess. I'm gonna be passing down so we can move along. Alright, Ms. Lawrence, right there, if you haven't kept up, we have a motion and a second on allowing Mr. Greenwood to participate telephonically. Uh, did you call roll?
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Are we calling roll or...?
I'm sorry, we're voting on whether he can participate or not.
Okay.
Aye.
I did say roll on my ear. Aye. Alright, Mr. Greenwood, you're in, and now I'll let you call roll again.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hanson? Mr. Earhart?
Here.
Mr. Miskowski?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Alright, folks, if you would, stand and go in on one side and follow that flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have is a review and adoption of meeting agenda. Are there any changes or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amended agenda that was presented to us this evening.
Second. Ms. Lawrence.
For... Mr. Earhart? I was just gonna say, for purposes of people in the audience, this includes items 5A, 8A, and 9A. Correct?
That's right.
Yes. So, just so everybody, if anybody printed a printed version or anything like that.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
And folks, tonight, and for the review of the board, we're offering a resolution to uphold the second amendment rights of the citizens of King William County. And before we start, Mr. Miskowski will be reading this, but I have to say, I already hear you loud and clear.
Thank God.
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution nineteen dash seventy-one to the King William County Board of Supervisors. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, "A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas Article One, Section thirteen of the Constitution of Virginia provides that "a well-regulated militia, composed of the body of the people, trained to arms, is the proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state; therefore, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed; that standing armies in time of peace should be avoided as dangerous to liberty; and that in all cases, military should be under strict subordination to and governed by the civil power." And whereas legislation considered at the state and federal levels potentially could have the effect of infringing on the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms is guaranteed by the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. And whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors wishes to oppose the passage of any bill containing language which would unlawfully infringe the rights of the citizens of King William County to keep and bear arms or unconstitutionally restrict the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of King William County. And whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its dear commitment to the constitutional rights of all citizens of King William County to keep and bear arms; and whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its opposition to any law that would unconstitutionally restrict the rights of citizens of King William County to bear arms under the Second Amendment. And whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its intent to oppose within the limits of the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia any efforts to unconstitutionally restrict such rights and to use reasonable legal means at its disposal to protect the constitutional rights of the citizens to keep and bear arms, including its power not to appropriate public funds to violate such rights, and its recognition of citizens' rights to petition for redress of grievances. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of King William County, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its intent to uphold the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of King William County, and its intent that public funds of the county not be used to unlawfully restrict Second Amendment rights or to aid in the unnecessary and unconstitutional restrictions of the rights under the Second Amendment of the citizens of King William County to bear arms; and that the Board of Supervisors hereby declares its intent to oppose unconstitutional restrictions on the right to keep and bear arms through such reasonable means that may be approved by the Board hereafter; and that the Board of Supervisors hereby declares King William County, Virginia, as a Second Amendment sanctuary.
Alright, but, uh, board members, are there any changes?
No, Mr. Chairman, I move adoption.
Uh, I guess coming out, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I guess coming out a little bit later on, eight, eight, the resolution.
Come out now if we...
We can do it right now?
Yep.
We just have to back up a little bit. Okay, give it a second.
Stephen, give it a second.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer that if folks had no other items on the agenda of interest that they, if they want to stay or not stay, it's up to the people in the audience.
Yeah, I understand that, but if they, there is a public comment period which we're going to now. And if we're just to express any comments or support or whatever, we do welcome you to come forward. Alright, the next item we have is six. The next item we have is a public comment period. Speakers, one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on non-publicary matters, and you can talk about the Second Amendment resolution. Yes, sir. And also, if you state your name and your district.
My name is Tom Gresham, Department of Public and District. I appreciate you gentlemen voting on what you just did. We're sick and tired of having to fight for our God-given right to protect ourselves. I would also like to see, take it one step further. An example is Kennesaw, Georgia. It's mandatory that every household, had a household, own a firearm in Kennesaw, Georgia. There is no violent crime in Kennesaw, Georgia. I would like to see that happen here. So, I would like you gentlemen to redo that, look at Kennesaw, Georgia, verify what I just stated, and I'd like to see it happen here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rodney Inge. I'm with the five-two-five Terra Alta Drive here in Allen. And I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for the amendments that they adopted for the county. I've been at this podium a lot of times, and I've never seen it like this. And I don't think me and you probably have either. The counties in this state have expressed their desire for the Second Amendment, their devotion that they showed, their comments, their public session, what they've done with their counties. Hopefully, our county is there now as well. Each person in this room deserves their Second Amendment, and that shouldn't even ever be in question. It was questioned one time, and they lost. It's starting to happen again. Thank you for showing up. Thank you, citizens of King William. Thank you, Jeff, Travis, the board, for taking this measure up and putting it on the ballot tonight to go ahead and take care of this. Each and everybody in here doesn't get a chance to talk right here, but I know that they all express your sincere gratitude. Thank you.
My name is Celeste Garrett. I've lived here since two thousand twelve. I'm a mom. I just want to thank you guys for upholding my right to defend myself. And also, anything that we can do, the Virginia Citizens Defense League will be there January twenty, twentieth. And they are having a gathering to demonstrate, and I would like to invite anybody else who wants to show up there, who is here today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Burbright. I'm from Lake River Guns, and I want to thank you guys for saving my retirement.
Good evening. My name is William Rascow, Department of Public and District. I really want to thank you all tonight for making the decision to allow us to continue to have our Second Amendment rights. As fathers, husbands, and service member, who always can't be at home, it helps me sleep a lot better at night knowing that my wife is able to protect my family when I could literally be anywhere in the country or overseas. So thank you.
Anyone else? I know we've got some old people to deal with all this traffic.
Yeah, we got what we came for.
They want to go home as bad as we?
Alright, not seeing anyone else come forward, I will close this public comment period.
Now... So now, now would probably be a good time for Mr. Earhart suggesting anybody that wants to exit now, do so, so that we can carry on.
Alright, folks, I call B. Dora. Alright, we have a motion or any comments on our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda item seven as presented this evening.
Second.
Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Our next item is nine, eight, old business resolution nineteen dash seventy, declaring a sole source purchase for the Motorola upgrade, Director Finance Natasha White.
This resolution is requested for our county attorney. The equipment for the base project. This resolution is requested for our county attorney declaring a sole source purchase for the Motorola upgrade. The equipment for the stage of Motorola project must be compatible with the Annenberg County Communications and existing Motorola equipment. The staff requests approval for resolution nineteen dash seven.
No more need to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution nineteen seventy as presented this evening.
Second.
Alright, there are motion and second. Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Motion, uh, resolution nineteen dash seventy, craft. Our next item is nine, B, resolution nineteen sixty-four, authorizing the contractual agreement for radio upgrade project of Motorola Solutions and Director Financial Service, Miss Natasha White.
This resolution, if approved, will authorize our county administrator to sign approved the contract of Motorola for expanding existing radio system, increasing the number of tower sites in the county from one to four. Staff request approval of this resolution.
Second.
Need to discuss. Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Alright, item nine, C, resolution nineteen dash sixty-five, authorizing financial agreement for radio upgrade project. We have Mr. Jamie Sanderson from Davenport.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, and Jimmy Sanderson with Davenport. Good to see you. When we last met, we were presenting proposals from lending institutions to fund the acquisition of Motorola contract you just approved. We told you that we needed to go back and still work out some of the details with the lowest provider, and that's Bank of America. We spent the last month and with the help of your staff and the folks from Motorola as well and your outside bond council, which is called Monfanoles, we were able to work out those issues and believe that we have documents in place to move forward with Bank of America. So you have, for you, a resolution that authorizes members of the board, with the chairman, as well as the county financial director as well as county administrators, to execute documents, the forms of which you are approving. Not final forms, but there's some change in the common forms. As we discussed with you the other week, the other month now, Bank of America ten-year proposal, interest rate of one point nine five over three, an amount not to exceed four point six million, and again, with a maximum term of ten years. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. The collateral again is the same. There is no general obligation pledge of the county. It's a subject of appropriation credit, and the equipment that's going to be purchased will be the collateral for the money.
Alright, I'll approve the resolution nineteen sixty-five, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Next item is nine, D, resolution nineteen dash sixty-six. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanderson.
Absolutely.
Our next item is resolution nineteen dash sixty-six, recommending the growing inspection, fee schedule, voting inspectors speaking.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I would just like to address some of the concerns Mr. Earhart raised with the fee schedule change. Firstly, a request for a pool definition. We had it to the fee schedule. To me, it seems like that's an attempt to distinguish which pools do and do not receive a permit, and that's not information that I believe should be on the fee schedule. Fee schedule should really just be pertaining to fees charged, not permits required. The fee schedule should be in effect whether or not a permit is required. So if somebody wanted a debt or a pool that didn't require a permit, if they got one, they are free to get one, it would still be charged as per. I would say also, the definitions and permit requirements should be found where it would do the most good. And people don't look to the fee schedule to figure that out. They're going to all the offices. They're gonna, we have handouts to go to. And we're updating our website to provide more information, more accessible information in that form.
Mr. Chairman, what's the problem with the asterisks when they're saying, see section such and such, or see definition found at such and such? I mean, I don't want every citizen in this county to look at something and say, oh, I got a pool. I gotta put a fee in, when they bought a, you know, two point one pool from Walmart.
We've never had that problem since I've been here. This isn't changing what cousin doesn't get a permit. And I don't think people look at the fee schedule and then backtrack and figure out that they need a permit for it. They're gonna look at what requires permits and any other information that they can find, and then look up what the fee is for it. And my, I don't want to link our fee schedule to the code because the code changes every three years. It's, I don't want to revisit this if they change what the requirements are that need a permit.
Well, again, I think it comes down to working smarter, working more efficiently. And we saw reaction tonight in terms of Second Amendment as a result of, well, what may or may not be intended. So, I just, I would rather personally that we define, you know, not only this, but also if we're going to grant exceptions. I don't, you know, one of the other concerns I have is every 501(c), whether it's Boy Scouts, King William, Little League, churches, whatever, when they do... every 501(c), whether it's Boy Scouts, King William, Little League, churches, whatever, when they do one of these inflatables, that we don't define that that's exempted, so, but I'll let you finish.
To address that exemptions, um, this isn't a new fee for that inflatables, it's just clarifying what amusement rise, what that really includes.
We never included inflatable.
We didn't include it in words, but that is what it is.
But, okay, so we're including it, we're including inflatables now in words here, but we don't want.
It was always included.
All right. Let me finish, Mr. Howard.
Who gets exempted and not is totally up to the county. We don't collect building department fees that go back into my department, so it is up to you guys, I don't really have a personal stake in this. But just for consideration, I don't, there's a legal basis for, uh, exempting churches and 501(c) only for inflatables. But if we're exempting these groups for inflatables, then we, we have to exempt them from all buildings.
Well, we, we do that for, like, historic, like, the churches in a historic area, uh, we, we have certain exemptions in place already.
On the building department.
Can we waive something for?
We, we waive, um, advertising fees, but I meant to waive fees regarding, uh, an application for a conditional use permit, is what it was. For a sign that St. John's wanted to put out, but we didn't waive any permit fees. Because that application fee comes, is generated by planning department.
I know we waived something related to.
It was that, I remember that very distinctly because they, they.
Churches related in a historic district, because I can go ahead and deal with it as well, that's why.
I don't recall negative, but I did specifically recall St. John's, and that was recent, that was within the last year or two.
Up to you how you wanna handle that, I just know that it, it is a lot of work and a lot of responsibility on the county to handle churches especially. Ebron brought his church, took over that, did a lot of renovations, Trail Charlotte didn't move to them. Brett Reed Memorial is going through a lot of renovations and updates.
Those are permanent, like, things, and you know, if you've got an inflatable out there, you're trying to raise funds to benefit the church. So, I mean, if you raise five hundred dollars, you, you have to pay a hundred dollars, and just for easy math, you gotta pay a hundred dollars in fees, you know, you just, you reduce your profit by, you know, twenty percent.
But, but I think, I think the, the basis of the point that is being made here is that, is on this side of the fee schedule, if we exempt them from one class of fees, we need to exempt them from all of them. Okay.
Mister.
So.
With respect to league council, is that the case? I mean, can't we exempt them for something specific?
Uniform. I'll just cover a little now. Uniformity of permitting is really important. Without researching the matter, I can't really say definitively one way or the other, but I would say this, I would certainly not recommend, uh, doing sort of case-by-case exemptions, um, for various reasons, including, uh, uniformity, uh, issues. Uh, what I would prefer is for, if, if, if there is something in the building department or anywhere else that is worthy of support of the 501(c)(3), uh, what I've recommended to my clients over the years is that they simply appropriate the money to that organization in the amount of the fees, and then you don't have uniformity issues, and there's no issue as far as, you know, making sure that you've exempted somebody properly or not.
But if you exempt all 501(c), it's not an issue with uniformity, is it?
I think you said, I don't know what that would get into.
He hadn't done background on that. And what are you saying, just to get rid of the fees only and not the inspection?
Correct.
Okay, because I, I wouldn't agree with getting rid of the inspection.
No. There's needs to fees only, I mean, again, this is, this, the, 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 the prepositional phrase, including inflatables, is all added. This is, this is new verbiage that's being added here. You know, if, if we're not gonna exempt them, again, and this is, this is my opinion from, from someone that believes in transparent government and, and supports lots of things going on in terms of fundraisers. If we're, if we're gonna include this, then, you know, we should have it in a resolution or something, people should be given the opportunity to speak and publicly comment on, on this, because we're, we're imposing something, um, without the, the knowledge and the will of the general populace, in my opinion.
This is not a new fee, nor a new required inspection, it's merely clarification in the language.
We, we never charged it for inflatables, did we?
We did.
Okay, so, but we never told people that you had to come in if you didn't inflatable, did we?
Unless we're asked.
We probably did not advertise.
Does the code, does the code state or say inflatables now?
I didn't look at the exact verbiage, but I believe it does.
I mean, we should have been, this has been an ongoing discussion for, you know, some time now, whether it's a couple weeks or a month or whatever, when, when we were all in here. Or I thought this would have been no, like, backhand. I, I personally don't, I don't think we should be including this fee for 501(c).
How much work is it to do these inspections, no matter where, where they are, 501(c) or our general industry?
Not much, for the rest of church work alone.
Yeah, all I'm talking about is the inflatables.
Can we make inflatables its own fee?
I think that's something I would.
Uh, sure, that's a question that I'm asking. If, if we're hung up on inflatables, can we break inflatables out and have like an inflatables-only fee? I, I, I'm trying to work with it here, but, um, I, I, at the same time, I understand and appreciate that this is not new, it's simply a clarification. No, 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 because, again, it, it's already an existing.
Oh, I, I was agreeing it's just an inflatable, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was asking if you can make it its own line, but.
Why can't we just strike including inflatables?
Okay, because it's in there, it'd be no inspection at all, correct?
You say it's already, it's already identified.
Sensibly is.
Well, I, I think the point that, uh, was made earlier is that this is just a fee, it has nothing to do with whether a permit is required or not, and so you could strike including inflatable, and it wouldn't affect what requires permit or not.
I would, uh, you, uh, just inflatables, not much.
All right, so having had this discussion, that I would make a motion that we revise nineteen dash sixty-six to strike the word including inflatables.
And is that a motion too, otherwise it's a doubt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll say. Any further, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Erhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
All right, our next item is, uh, resolution nineteen dash sixty. Our next item is item D, resolution nineteen dash sixty-seven, commending the regional animal shelter city schedule, Director of Financial Services Natasha White.
Resolution nineteen dash sixty-seven is presented to you this evening for your approval to modify the fee schedule for the regional animal shelter, which has not been updated since two thousand fifteen. We are requesting the changes to occur effective December first, two thousand nineteen. The increase in fee schedule will have a minimal impact to the current fiscal year budget. The staff recommends approval of this request.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make approval of resolution nineteen sixty-seven.
Director.
Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Erhart?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Our next item is, uh, resolution nineteen dash sixty-eight, commending Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule, Director of Financial Services Natasha White.
Resolution nineteen dash sixty-eight is presented to you for your approval to modify the fee schedule for Parks and Recreation, which has not been updated since two thousand fifteen. The effective date for the increases would be December first, two thousand nineteen, if approved. The increase in fee schedule will have a minimal impact to FY two, the twenty twenty budget. The staff recommends approval of this request.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make approval of resolution nineteen sixty-eight.
Second.
Director.
All right, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Erhart?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Our next item is G, update on fire and emergency medical services program, Battalion Chief of Administration, Laura.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, I'm not sure about that.
All right, did everybody get a chance to look over my report, and do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but I, I will say thank you for helping me with the question that I had this morning from.
Absolutely.
That call, thank you.
The house that was donated, is that for training for, for burning?
Uh, it was donated to us so that we could burn it and train in it, however, there is a process that has to be done for a house to burn it.
You got your permit from the A.C. for one thing.
Well, and so you have to look into the asbestos and all that stuff, so we had inspected, it is not appropriate for burning for EAP and all regulations, but it is appropriate for us to be owning gear, and we can use that as long as we are not burning and do drills of that sort.
Where is that located?
Uh, it is in, it is behind the Exon here on thirty. I don't have the exact address in front of me, it's probably five minutes from here.
And so Mr. Kellman maintains ownership, we just can use it for training purposes?
It is a house that he has bought the property, and that he plans to tear down the house and build on, but the house is in good shape, it has good bones, there's no immediate danger to it, so it is a, it's a Cape Cod, would be fantastic, it represents many of the houses we have here in the county, and so that's why we would like to use it for training. Okay, um, just one thing really quick that I did want to bring up and address that we, that I have added to my report, the EMS filling section has been added, and we have outsourced our EMS filling, and we are now using a company to do that, and it's been a blessing in disguise, because we were also picked randomly for a Medicare study that is being done, and if we don't participate in that study appropriately, we can be fined. So they found, they are ahead of the game on that, and willing to work with us, and we're looking to give a place that can be done.
You said that was, the fees are a part of?
I'm sorry, sir.
Were you saying the fees, that billings can be considered as a part of nine F?
No, what I'm saying to the report that I do for the board packet, I have added the subtopic of EMS filling, so that we can say, I see exactly what our residue is and what's going on with the billing system and the Medicare study to see them.
Where's Cornersville located?
Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania, yeah.
I would thought that was Keystone.
West Point uses them also. Yes, we, West Point uses them, several departments use them, we paid back on the contract to get the best deal we could, and they are, and they are phenomenal. They, so far they have come, they have met with us, we have talked to them, they are offering station training to our individuals who would like to have information and better, do a better job of what we need for EMS filling to get the most out of it now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Our next item is K, new business, we've forgotten, our next item is eleven, administrative manager for the county administration.
Gentlemen, before we get into the, uh, eleven A, the tentative by the calendar, um, I have been, uh, asked to speak to the board, uh, the courts are allowing the, uh, courts to close an additional day during the Christmas holidays. Uh, we are scheduled to close December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday and Wednesday. The courts have added a day of Thursday, December twenty-sixth. Staff is asking to bring this to the board, um, to see if the board supervisor could be agreeable to county offices being closed on the twenty-sixth as well. Yes, uh, well, also, the courts have extended also a, an additional day, uh, December thirty-first, which is the day preceding January first, as an additional day for the courts to close. We were only going to be closed on Wednesday, January first. So that would be a consideration as well, if the board so chooses. So that would be granting two additional days.
Sure, we've looked up there enough this year, I'm fine with updating it.
What's the Commonwealth doing, Stephen?
He don't get it, so, yeah.
But he's also in a war.
Well, so this was done, is intertwined with, with state government, that's what I would imagine.
In that, we can change it by the bylaw.
I, I understand that, but if the state was gonna be closed, there would be limited functionality within the county system, is what I'm, what I'm going on, but the fact that the state is, is open, um, I don't, I'm not sure if I heard what Mr. Green was saying there, but if the state is open, I don't support the additional days of the enclosure.
Well, our schedule that we follow is the state's schedule, these two additional days will let the courts provide itself.
I like, I'll step up, I think you, somewhere there, that I, I would recommend giving in two extra days. If, if one is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, your twenty-sixth is a Friday, correct?
No, it's Thursday. Both in the middle of the week, it's a Thursday.
So they still better come back in on, on Friday.
So he, well, here's the deal, I would think at this point in time, since there is no consensus, we would in fact be looking for a motion, um, on this, which I'll go ahead and I'll move that we allow the two additional days, but we do need to do a roll call vote, and I'll remind, uh, that the tie vote, it doesn't kill the motion. So, I'll motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Erhart?
No.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Motion?
Stephen's bringing everybody Danish as unboxing today. Don't, don't worry, Stephen, I'll make sure you guys share.
Gentlemen, something else that I would like to request is that we cancel the scheduled December ninth work session. At this time, I don't have anything prepared, and we will be having a regular meeting, uh, the following week on the sixteenth.
After what we just did, something compels me.
Except your back-to-back, but I agree, it's like, uh, you didn't give it away, but we didn't take it away.
If there's nothing to put on the agenda, there's no point in having.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it is back-to-back, so is that a motion?
Um, we don't need a motion if there's consensus.
All right. I, I agree with your word.
Mr. Greenwood?
I agree.
Sarah? I've done get with Lydia. Yeah. Oh, okay. I'm gonna run cash calendar, okay, Natasha, you're up, and then we're gonna tentative fiscal year twenty twenty county budget calendar.
Hard to believe, but we're talking twenty twenty-one now. So what you have before you is the tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget schedule. We've already sent out the outside, the, the documents to the outside, the internal departments, um, giving them this year, two thousand nineteen actuals. Um, so we've got that ball rolling, and, uh, just wanted to make the board aware of this is tentative, and we'll make any adjustments as, um, needed, and we'll go ahead and, um, update. tentative, and we'll make any adjustments as needed, and we'll go ahead and update the website when we make any adjustments.
Any questions?
Okay, do we need a doubt, thanks?
Thank you.
All right, the next item we have is the board supervisor's comments, and I don't know if this is a few or less.
Thanks to everyone who came out tonight, thanks to everyone who's hung around and seen us at the meeting. Thanks to everyone who came out and voted in, in the election as well. We see the net of democracy, how important that is. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you later at December.
Mr. Greenwood, you'd be up next.
Okay, just wanted to thank everybody, it was kind of a wish I didn't have any served out this time, but thank you for everything, I was a little bit rambling, thank you for everyone that voted me back in, it's nice to be here, over here.
I don't like that last part.
All right, thank you, Mr. Erhart.
All right. First thing as a reminder, the King William Emergency Ministry will be having their annual fundraiser, that's going to be December 7th, it's at Beulah this year at 7:00. So if you don't have that on your calendar, please put that on your calendar to come out and support that activity. Eight, December the eighth? December the eighth, thank you, that's Sunday.
Eight o'clock.
Seven o'clock, sorry about that.
How was it?
Beulah Baptist Church. All right, so especially in December, I think people should reflect on peace and tranquility, and so I will take this opportunity this evening to thank the opportunity, having been served for the last four years. We'll make a, a closing statement tonight with respect to that. I think this position probably was the single most thing in my life where I saw a lot of ungratefulness coming forth in, in people. There was a lot of, a lot of negativity, which I hope can be put to the side and moved forward.
...